Okay, I'm going to call this special council workshop to order for Tuesday, May 22, 2018. I'll let the record show that the entire council is here. They're here somewhere, but they're here. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. Item for discussion at workshop DS 18-039, City Manager Updates. And that's with Mr. Olson, Preliminary Budget.
The intent of this item is to simply bring the council up to date with where we are in the budget process, lay some groundwork for some future discussions. I am not asking, I'm not asking you to make any decisions about any of this material at this point in time. I am not, I'm not even inviting debate over it. I'm certainly happy to answer questions, but the intent here is to bring you up to speed with the status and the staff work on this, on this budget. That's it. We were working on this. This is a, this is a fluid process. You'll notice that every page that you have is marked draft because every page is subject to change at this point. We're not going to be able to finalize these numbers until mid or late July because we will not, there's so much work to be done between now and then on the part of the staff, and we will not have our property tax numbers until the 25th of July. So there's no way we can finalize our presentation. You'll see from a slide later on that we're going to be showing you that, that on August the 7th, we intend to transmit the budget to the city council. At that point in time, the budget will be balanced. At that point in time, we will have the facts, we'll have, we'll know everything that we're going to know. So when we give you the budget on August 7th, it will be balanced, it will be accurate. And at that point, the council can start digging into it and spend the entire month of August and half of the month of September going through it in as much detail as you need to. So again, this is a preliminary kind of status report on where we are as of right now today. Much of the material I'm going to show you is in the same format as what you saw last year in terms of demographics and background material. Toward the end of the presentation, there are a couple of new slides that we put together. Some of the material has been updated to the extent we have the facts to update it. Some of it still yet needs to be updated and will be over the next month and a half. So that, that's kind of the preliminary. If we go to slide number two, this is a population comparison of the city of Colleen to our benchmark cities. These are the same benchmark cities that we used last year, and we're continuing to use the same ones for the same reasons we used them last year. Slide number three is population. This is an important factor because as we, as we evaluate current needs and as we look into the future, population is one of the primary factors that we use to predict how many, how much budget, how many people, how much materials we need to continue to provide the services that we're providing. If we want to keep doing the same thing in the same proportions into the future that we're currently doing today, we need to, we need to anticipate how much, how much more population we're going to have and how much more ability to provide service we're going to need to meet that, that increasing demand of population growth. So what you're looking at here is up through 2019, these are the, these are actual, the most accurate numbers we have in terms of what our population is. Beyond 2019, we've done a regression analysis. It's our projection of what we think it's going to be. Slide number four is income for the, the median household income for the city of Colleen. And you can see the big red arrow there that shows where we are in relation to our benchmark cities. Let me say the benchmark cities is, the benchmark cities are a combination of other Texas cities that have similar characteristics to us and local cities that are like Temple and Copper's Cove and Belton and Harker Heights that are close enough that, that even though they're smaller than we are, we need to compare ourselves to them because they're our neighbors. Slide number five is an indication of the, of the percentage of our population that lives below the poverty line. In this, in this case, being close to the top is a good thing because we have a very, compared to the other benchmark cities, we have a very small percentage of our population that lives below poverty. Slide number six is inflation. Again, up through 2019, these are actual inflationary numbers. Beyond that, we, we have used, I forget the name of the.
C-Fund. International Monetary Fund.
The International Monetary Fund, projection of inflation. So as we look at the future, we see population increasing, we see, we see inflationary increases in both revenue and expenditure, and we try to project that to see what, what the next five years looks like, and then, and then when we put on our long-range binoculars, what the next 20 years looks like. These are two primary factors as we do our projections. Slide number seven shows you what funds we have. Now, a lot of people think about the city as the city, one organization doing kind of one thing, and it really isn't that way. When, when we do, when we manage the city and when we do a budget, we're really talking about a, a combination of smaller businesses or smaller operations in total, and they add up to the city. So that's, that's called fund accounting, governmental fund accounting. So when we look at this, we've got two governmental funds, four enterprise funds, four internal service funds, and at least 22 other funds. We have to create a budget for each one of those funds, and that budget has to be balanced. So the revenues have to equal the expenses, and then each one of those funds has assets and liabilities in their, in their business accounts. So we take all of that into consideration when we put together a city budget. Let's go to the next page. Now, this is a little bit busy, but because each one of these funds operate independently and separate from one another, they actually do business with each other. So one fund will provide service to another fund, and, and they have to charge for that, and the other fund has to pay for it. So what you're looking at here is across the top are the four primary operating funds. In the bottom are the internal service funds, and, and those funds do business with each other. So the lines that we have drawn is the movement of money between funds. And I know in the past, we've had people say, you know, it's a shell game, it's hocus-pocus, and the city is doing weird things. I just want you to know, I've had a lot of experience in city management. Every city I know of, every city I have managed does business this way. The accountants and the auditors look at it very closely. They make sure that you're not doing anything stupid or extreme, and, and that the books line up, and that the, and that the reasoning is sound between that movement. Let's go to the next page. The point I want to make with this slide is it isn't all about money and numbers. It's, it's about achieving our mission. It's about the service that we provide for the people who live in this city. Money is only one of the tools that we use to accomplish that. And the expenditure of money, the creation of budgets, all of that means nothing if it isn't serving the interests of the public. And I want you and everybody to know that we are focused on our mission. We have spent over the last year getting clarity about what our city mission is, what the mission of every department is, and inside of that departmental mission, what is it that makes up that mission? And, and we've kind of crystallized that in our departmental business plans. So we've got, we're getting, we've spent a lot of energy getting clear about that mission to make sure that the budget is accomplishing our core mission, and we're putting our resources, our time, and our effort on the most important things. Let's go to the next slide, number 10. These are the funds, these are the biggest funds that operate in the city. So we've got the general fund, it's got 903 employees, it's an $82 million budget. The primary source of revenue for that fund is taxes. And a tax is something you pay that does not have, does not necessarily have any relationship to the service you receive from it. I could pay taxes all year long that go primarily to the police and fire department and never have a fire and never have a need to call the police department. So I pay for that. I pay school taxes. I have no children in school, haven't had for a long time, but I pay those taxes because it's a general benefit to the community. The Water and Sewer Fund has 119 employees, a forty, almost $41 million budget, and the primary source of that fund is fees. Now, in this case, a fee has a direct relationship to your use of that service. So you've got a water meter out in front of your house, and if you use a lot of water, you pay more than somebody who doesn't use very much water. So with a fee, there is a direct relationship to the, to the service you get and what you pay. Solid Waste Fund, 102 employees, $17.5 million budget, and it is supported by fees as well. There's a Drainage Utility Fund with about 43 employees, almost a $5 million budget, and it is supported by fees. You have the Aviation Fund, 39 employees, $3.2 million budget, and it is supported by fees as well. And then we have a bunch of other funds that we deal with. Inside of those funds, there's 73 employees, it amounts to about a $31 million budget. And the revenue source there is not taxes, but there are various restricted monies that come in, various grants, and debt service is a big piece of, of that particular fund. Now, I've color-coded this slide in order to send a message to you. If it's green, it's in good shape. We don't have to worry about it, not this year, and, and probably for several years. If it's yellow, which is kind of orange, if you're colorblind, it's yellow. That fund is a cautionary fund, okay? What I mean by that is the fees are not, the fee, we're running out of fee. We don't have to deal with it in fiscal 19, but we're going to have to deal with it after we adopt the budget in fiscal 19. We have got to look at the amount of the fee, and we've got to look at the fee structure itself. So sometime after October, we've got to put this on our discussion list and come in and have some serious detailed conversation about the Drainage Utility Fee. The General Fund and the Aviation Fund are in red because we are challenged in those funds, and there are things that we need to do this year to make them work. So, and I'll, we'll talk more about the General Fund. Let me just say about the Aviation Fund because we're not going to go into any more details on that tonight. The Aviation Fund has not paid for itself for a number of years, and it has used fund balance. So they take in a certain amount of money, and then they draw money out of their bank account in order to do business. That's been going on for a number of years, and we can see the end of the bank account. So we're going to have to have conversation about what, what the future is. And so one of the discussion items that I'll be bringing to you in the relatively near future is going to have to deal with that. And just to preview it, we're going to have to deal with the parking, or a potential subsidy, or further drawing down of the, of the fund balance. And I think that's probably going to be the answer for fiscal 19, is do everything we can to balance it, draw the fund balance down just a little bit further, but we can't let it sit there. We, we're going to have to address the problem in, in some fashion because it's just not going to last. So we need to have a conversation about that. And the, and the condition of the General Fund will become apparent as we work through the balance of this presentation. So let's go to number 11. This is the budget calendar that we're working on. We have been, staff has been working, starting in January, on the strategic phase of the budget, meaning what does it look like, where are we going, how do we put it all together in some fashion, what directions do we want to give to the departments to put their budgets together this year, which we did in approximately April. The departments are currently working on the details of their budgets. And during the months of June and July, we'll, we'll, my office and Finance and Budget and whoever else we need to be involved, will be going through the balancing phase to make sure that everything balances so that when we give you the budget on August the 7th, it will be a balanced budget. So that's kind of where we are. And then we've listed some of the key dates that the council should be aware of because the council is going to be involved in, in that process. Once we give you the budget on August the 7th, it comes over to you, and you're going to have to be extraordinarily involved in it for the next six weeks. The next slide shows budget policies. I will just say this, with the adoption of the Comprehensive Financial Policy that the council approved earlier this year, we have all of the budget policies we need. Last year, this slide was different because we needed stuff. You gave it to us, and we're in good shape. Slide number 13 are strategic issues that, that we've been paying particularly strong attention to. We have talked to you, I believe, about every one of these in public meetings before, and we're going to have to bring them back and have more discussion at some point. Balancing the budget is probably the number one priority, and I assure you that will happen. Dealing with compensation equity, this is, this is the amount of money that we pay our employees. We've told you in the past that across the whole city enterprise, we're about 13.5% behind the marketplace. Public safety is about 7.5% behind, and some of our, some of our public works and other employees are as much as 30% behind the market. So to me, this is a very key issue. It manifests itself in turnover, in additional training costs, and, and, and there's just a, a flat-out fairness issue associated with this that we need to pay attention to. And then there's retirement. We've had conversation about our retirement. The TMRS system is being paid for on an ad hoc basis, and we're actually living a, I forgot the term they use, ad hoc and annually repeating. Yes. So, so we pay for it on an ad hoc basis, and we actually live it on an annually repeating basis, and there is a difference there. In truth, we're, we're about 79% funded in our retirement system, and it's going down. So we need to talk about, number one, do we want to fix this, and if so, how? And we'll bring you some recommendations on how to do that. But this is an issue we need to decide whether we try to include in, a solution in the proposed budget or not. Then we have the Deferred Street Maintenance. We've talked to you about that in the past, and we have a presentation ready to present as soon as you're ready for it that outlines how the city has dealt with that, previous engineering studies, previous recommendations, and we have go-forward recommendations to bring to you and say, here are your options, and we'll have recommendations, and we'll see where it goes. And then Deferred Building Maintenance is the same kind of issue as the Deferred Street Maintenance. We have a lot of buildings, we have not been taking care of the capital maintenance. We have been taking care of the janitorial maintenance, and our, our custodial crew does a fantastic job, but they don't repair the roofs, they don't patch the parking lots, and they don't fix the HVAC systems. Those are all capital expenditures that we haven't been doing a good enough job with. So those are all strategic issues that have, they have both a short-term and a very long-term financial impact on us, and we need to understand it, and we need to make intentional decisions around those strategic issues. Let's go to number 14. Number 14 is the famous doughnut chart. If you look at these charts, the inside of the doughnut shows where the expense takes place, and the outside of the doughnut shows you where the revenue comes from to pay for that. What we're looking at here is a 10-year span from 2008 to 2018. The intent there, it's hard to see movement and directional shift in an organization if you're just looking one year at a time, but if you look at a decade, you can start to see some changing taking place, and that's what this is intended to do. As we get the FY '19 budget done, we will add a third doughnut there, which will be FY '19, and then you can compare those with it. Let's go to the next slide, number 15. This is looking at our budget by expense category. This is the way our auditors look at it, this is the way they report it in, in our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It looks at personnel, material supplies, debt, capital outlay, transfers, et cetera. So you can, you can look at the budget in that way as well. Let's go to number 16. This is staffing. It's, it's a graphic representation of other charts that we have shown you so that you can see of all the fund, the operating funds, where the bulk of the, well, where the employees are, whether it's the bulk of the employees or the minority of the employees, you can see where they, what funds they're assigned to. Let's go to the next slide, number 17. This is kind of a tabular form of the same information. What I want to point out here is that 10 years ago, down at the bottom, 10 years ago, we had 9.8 employees per thousand. In 2018, that is, it went down about 1 to 8.7, and you'll see in a few minutes that our projection is it's going down even further. Let's, let's look at the next slide, number 18. This is a comparison of our employees to our benchmark cities, and you can see we're approximately in the center of that group. Let's go to the next one. These are priorities that the city council gave us last year. I assume that they are still the priorities. Public safety first, street funding, better-paying jobs from an economic development program, and making sure that we balance the budget and take into account our future needs when we're doing it. Let's go to the next slide, please, and the next one after that. Now, we're going to, for the balance of the presentation, we'll just talk about the General This first slide is intended to just, again, kind of repeat what we've already said. The, the General Fund in relation to the other funds, this is a graphical representation of that. 10 years ago, the General Fund was 51% of the, of the whole city. In 2018, it was 45%. Let's go to the next page. This, this is, this goes a step deeper, a level deeper by looking at departments in the General Fund. So on the inside, you've got the departments that we have in the General Fund that provide the service, and on the outside ring, you've got where the money comes from to pay for those services. So, and they're, they're, they're in close proportion with the way it really works. In other words, if you look at 2018, if you took all of the property tax and almost all of the sales tax, it would be approximately equal to our public safety expenditures. So the rest of the city General Fund is operating on other kinds of revenue other than taxes. And you can see how that has shifted over, over the 10-year span. Okay, let's go to the next one, number 23. Number 23 is just looking at the budget in a different way, looking at the categories of expenditure, personal services, material supplies, capital outlay, and so forth. Number 24 is a tabular account of where the people in the General Fund work, which department they're in. Again, I will point you to the bottom where 10 years ago, we had 7.3 employees per thousand in the General Fund, and in 2018, we have 6.1. What that really means, I will interpret that for you, what it means is it's harder to provide service. We are a service-dedicated organization. In order to provide that service, we have to have people to do it. It's a people-to-people organization. So when the population goes up and our, our employee ratio goes down, it puts a strain on the organization to keep providing the same kind of service. Let's go to the next page, number 25. This is how, this is how our General Fund compares to our benchmark cities' General Funds. Okay, let's go to number 26. Couple of things I want to point out on this. This is a little bit more detail about where the money comes from in tabular form in the General Fund, and I'll, again, I'll point you to the bottom. In 2008, we had $580 per capita in the General Fund to spend on services. In 2018, that had gone down to 554, which is a decrease of about 5%. But if you take into account the buying power of that money, it actually went down by about Let's go to the next page, number 27. This is another way of comparing ourselves to other cities. The different colors of those horizontal bars represent different kinds of revenue that come into the city, taxes and various kinds of fees and so forth. So you can see of our benchmark cities how we compare in terms of all of that. And you can see, Colleen is toward, it's actually below, below center, toward the bottom of that group. Okay, let's go to number 28. This, we're turning away from, from total, and we're just looking at sales tax here. So this is the actual sales tax rate that Colleen has had since 2008 or '09. And on the right-hand side, what you see is the amount of sales tax per capita. And you can see it was, it was up there at about 155. It started to dip a little bit for a few years, and it's starting to come back a little bit now. This does not take into account the value of inflation or the impact of inflation. It's just raw numbers. Let's look at number 29. 29 is how Colleen compares to its benchmark cities in sales tax. Again, we're, we're in the bottom half of that group. Number 30. Number 30 looks at property tax, and on the left-hand side of that slide, you can see the total property tax rate. So for example, Copperus Cove has 79.79 cents per hundred. Colleen has 74.98 cents per hundred. And then the colors represent how that money is used. When, when we adopt the mill rate, we have to designate the portion that goes to operations and the portion that goes to paying for our debt service. So the blue part is operations, and the red part is debt service. And I've said before to the council, in my, this is a rule-of-thin judgment, but in my rule-of-thin judgment, we ought to, we ought to have about a 25% of our mill rate going to, to debt, and ours is a little bit higher than that at this point in time. Number 31 is kind of the historic property tax. It's a table showing the actual property tax, the history of our property tax in Colleen. So in the second column, you've got the actual property tax rate that has been in effect. And if you look between 2014 and 2015, it went up. The reason it went up was the effective tax rate. So what happened in that year was the actual valuation of the community went down, so in order to collect the same amount of money, the property tax rate had to come up. So it wasn't like the city council said, we need more money, let's go out and raise taxes. No. What they said was, we need the same amount of money, so we have to raise the tax rate to get it. Then, then if you look at the second-to-last column, that is the impact. John, is that, is that just the disabled veteran exemption, or is that total exemption?
Total.
All right. So when you look at, when you look at that second-to-last column, you can see that 10 years ago, 9% of our total valuation in, in the city was exempt from taxation. Over the last 10 years, that has gone from 9% to 20, our estimate for, for this coming year is 24%. And I will tell you that the bulk of that relates to the disabled veterans exemption. It's not all disabled veterans exemption, but most of it is. And the, and the rapid increase over the past several years has been almost entirely veteran exemption impact. Okay, let's go to number 32. This is our taxable value compared to our benchmark cities. And in this case, we're very close to the bottom. Okay, then let's go to number 33. 33 is a, a graph showing our general fund revenues compared, per, per thousand population compared to our benchmark cities. Let's go to number 34. What this one is, is just dealing with our ad valorem tax, our property tax. And so the blue, well, let me say this, up through 2019, this is actual, actual numbers. Beyond 2019 is our projection of what those numbers are going to be. The black line on the top is the inflationary impact. So we have taken actual inflation on 2008 and drawn a black line, and then from 2019, we've used the projection that I showed you before of what inflation is going to be, our anticipation of what it's going to be. So, so the black line represents the same buying power from 2008 forward. The blue part, the blue part of the bar represents what we get, and the red part of the bar represents what we don't get because of exemptions. And given, given the fact, when you looked at that previous table and you saw in 10 years, it went from 9% to 24%, if that same kind of growth in the exemptions continues, it's going to look like that red piece there. And if you go out 20 years, we're, we're not keeping up with our inflationary costs. Okay, let's go to number 35. This deals with staffing. So what we've got here is on the top two, the top left and the top right, deals with, the left, the left graph on the top deals with actual amounts of staffing for the entire organization. The one on the right, the blue one on the right, represents staffing per thousand, thousand population. I've been talking so much, I'm starting to get a little bingy. Sorry about that. So the top left is what we'd like to see. So what that means is, we take the number of employees we have now for population, and over the next five years, our population is going to grow. And, and if we, and if we just keep the same ratio of employees for, thank you, for new population, it will go up, it will go up by this, by that slope, which means the employees per thousand will just stay flat. Because we're going to stay the same relative position in our ability to serve that population. The bottom two graphs are our projection of what is going to happen. So the top ones are what we'd like to happen, the bottom ones are what we think is going to happen. And what we think is going to happen is that this downward slope in actual number of employees is going to go down. And it's going to have to go down because we need to balance the budget. That's, that's the trajectory that we're on. So if that happens, then this also happens, which means we go from, looks like about 8.7 employees per thousand down to 7.3 employees approximately. So this is the trajectory that, that we believe that we're on. Let's go to, let's go to page 36. So this is the general fund and our actual kind of a little, one-step-more-detailed projection of what the next five years looks like. So in 2018, we budgeted for, and it looks like we're on track to receive $82 million in general fund money. For 2019, we're projecting that that will go down to 81.4 million. And the reason it's going to go down primarily is because we're losing our public safety grants, which we've had the benefit of using over the past several years, and they're going to go away. And, 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 and that is going to impact our total revenues. And then it will start going back up again. The natural growth that takes place, it will not keep pace with inflation, but it will continue to grow again after our projection is. Okay, let's go to number 37. Again, I want to remind you of these strategic issues. I want that to be in your mind because the next slide I'm going to show you does not take those issues into account. Let's go to number 38. That's taking the same information that I've already shown you and just putting it into a line graph. So the green one on the bottom is, is our projection of revenues. So between '18 and '19, we think it's going to go down a little bit, and then it will start coming back up. The red line takes fiscal '18 and just adds an inflationary factor to it. We, we believe that inflation is going to be about 2.5%. And so if our, our current expenses adding nothing to it just increases by the natural increase in the cost of goods and services, it will go up on that slope. Now, there's a difference, there's a difference between those two lines that you could see. And let me, let me say again, this projection does not take into account the five, well, takes in, it takes into account balancing the budget. It does not take into account the other four strategic issues. So the work that we are going to do over the next month and a half is to create a budget where the red line and the green line are on top of each other. Okay? I am going to be bringing you solutions to these challenges. I am going to be bringing you a balanced budget. So what this presentation hopefully has done is just explain what kind of a challenge that's going to be. It's not a challenge that we can't deal with, and it's not a challenge that we can't overcome. So I don't want anybody to misunderstand that or to get the wrong impression about it. We are absolutely going to balance the budget and bring it to you in a responsible way. But it's going to be a challenge, and there are a number of decisions along the way that I can't make by myself. So I will be bringing issues to you, one at a time, saying, what do you want to do about this, or what do you want to do about that? And depending on what your answer is, I will take the information that you give me, and I will use that to balance the budget. Does that make sense? All right. So with that, that is the conclusion of our status report on the, on the work of the budget up to this point in time.
I, I had one thought that came to mind as, as you're doing, like, the comparison between the number of employees based on 1,000 and our growth, our projected growth, and then you compare that to other cities. And I don't know if it's possible to take that even a little bit further because each city is different. And when I look at Colleen, you think about our transient nature that we have, and it would be nice if you can compare, you know, how many people move in and out of our city compared to others, because what that requires is more staff. You know, I don't know how many people actually turn in their water bill every day or turn it off compared to that, because that's a service that you do need more employees because sometimes we get calls on that, but that's just one of many. I mean, we get a lot of calls, you know, even on the state, we have a local DMV, I know that has none to do with, with us, the city, but as council members, I know we get a lot of calls because it is such a busy place here in Colleen. And sometimes they staff it based on what other cities have, and you go to their city, you can go right away, you come to Colleen, they don't have enough personnel because I think they budget them just pretty much the same as others. And so that would be neat if we can figure out, okay, how many people are coming in and out of our city so that we can know what services, how many garbage cans are put out, how many utility bills are turned on and off, and use that as comparison, because sometimes it can be misleading, you know? Another city may not need as many employees because they're not that busy in the transient nature as us, you know? So, so those are things that I think.
And let me just say this. As we have gone through our business plans this year, we, as I, I told you before, we've identified our mission in, in pretty good detail. We've also identified the beginning of some performance and bench, performance measures that go along with those mission elements. So we'll be gathering data that support the services that we, we won't have it for a couple of years, Mayor.
Yeah.
It's going to take a while to, to get into a routine and actually be gathering important data that we can use, but we've started that process. Now, the comparison thing that you're talking about, that, that would be something that we would, we would have to add to our, our research.
And, and, and it's one thing that we're trying to figure out. I know that HATA right now is in the process of trying to figure out where, because our growth is just, you know, huge, and we're trying to figure out what's causing that. So we're going to, you know, hire a company that's going to try to figure that out, you know? Why is it Colleen growing so much? And I think you hit it there, because a lot of times what causes our problems is what causes our growth. And it's good and it's bad, because the cause of it is that low tax value that you showed because of affordability. People love to come Colleen because it's more affordable than most cities. You know, you compare that to our neighbor, Harker Heights, where their median price of a house is $200,000 plus compared to Colleen at $138. That causes that growth to, to happen, so. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Murk. And this is not, it's not a question, it's just an observation on my, my part, from my way of, as I'm going to look at this, I, I don't want to get in details. Page 24, 2008 general fund, general funds based on revenues, as I saw and everything in the briefing, 7.3 per 1,000. On 2018, 6.1 per 1,000. Looking at 2019, '20, and '21 projections out to get that green line to match the red, red to match the green, whatever you want to do. So how many services did we, what services did we cut when we eliminated 1, 1.5 employees per 1,000?
You know, that, that was spread, that was spread throughout the enterprise, and it resulted in things like not growing, so that, I mean, that was a real impact. But there were things like we've dealt with recently with risk management, we, we just stopped doing risk management. We, we dispersed our HR functions out to the departments. We took purchasing and did away with our purchasing department and then just added an extra duty to departments. All of those decisions were, I believe, were probably done in order to squeeze the way we've squeezed, and there were probably many, many more that we've done that way. The problem, the problem with that is, and I, those are short-term solutions to a long-term problem. And the problem is, like with purchasing, if you don't have a good controlled purchasing system, you're losing money by not being efficient, and you're opening yourself up to fraud. So in my way of thinking, we have to kind of reverse some of those decisions and restructure how we do our business so that we can be more efficient and we can protect our assets and our people better than we have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rivera.
Well, if you want to put fear on me, you did it.
No, I didn't, I didn't intend to do that, Mr. Rivera.
Because let me tell you what I see. And there's no question, I'll do a scenario, and then later on, when the question, do you, we get ready, we go into it. On slide number 10, according to the aviation, we have a situation there. And I hope we could discuss this during the process of the budget, not after the budget. And compensation being below the marketplace, there has been a trend in Colleen for years and years and years, and that's why we lose so many public safety personnel per se. And please, whoever says it's not about money, that you ask the people that left. Employee, and slide number 17, employee versus service, that's including public safety and all the service that we require to give to the citizen because they pay taxes. And slide 34, the money that we're not receiving, I bet you that's part of the aviation, part of the house, that we're not getting out of what we're giving. And finally, in my, the way I look at it, is the shot, the challenge that we're going to have, in slide number 38, is about how are we going to cut services? And I know you have that slide there that looks beautiful, because we're going to put a line in, in top of the other one. But then when I ask myself, are we going to base the budget 2019, and you don't have to answer that right now, if you're going to base the budget of 2019 based on cutting department services, I'm very concerned about that. We just lost the graph of public safety, and I hear so much comment about we need more public safety personnel. And they leave and... And they're leaving left and right. And I just can't see how we're gonna cut that department also as well, as other department, that street department, and so forth. I would like to see those issue, Mr. Mayor, come before we go into the budget, because I'm leaving in two years, God permit. You may be here six years. Other city's council members coming in, and if we don't do nothing right now, as we see this, I think we're gonna have a balanced budget based on sacrifice to the citizen. Because we ain't gonna have the services to provide what they really need to, especially the way we're growing. Service, everybody does need it. And the number one problem that we have in our city is, I don't see so much citizens sitting there to listen to this. Issues like this one. I'm a citizen. Once I leave this tonight, I'm a regular citizen like everyone else. I could see myself four years from now. We need to take this little presentation you gave us very seriously, because I don't want to see a budget just to have a balance, just because we want a balanced budget, but we cutting services and we cutting departments. I'm very concerned, very, very concerned.
All right.
No question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And remember, he was just presenting it to us.
I know, that's what I said, I don't want to ask the question.
Yeah, so we're gonna have time to discuss it.
So what I really want is for the council to take this information and think about it.
Yeah.
We'll be bringing it back, piece at a time. We will have the discussion. And I just want to give you the backs, put it in your minds, put it in your hands, let you be thinking about it before we start that discussion.
And I don't want to speak for Mr. Johnson, but do you have this on a PowerPoint? Because he always, I'd love it on a PowerPoint, if he can send it to us on a presentation.
I just have one question.
Mrs. Fleming.
We can, we can do that, yeah.
Mr. Olson.
I'm sorry.
You got it? Are you gonna put it on the website and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would just like to say, I think you've done a great job presenting this to us, sir. And I know it's just a formality that you want us to look at, make a decision, and come back and talk about it. And I know you haven't made any decisions about letting anybody go and things of that nature.
No, absolutely not.
We do respect you as our city manager. We're gonna look at what you presented to us and work with you, and that's what we have to do, sir. Thank you very much.
It's a lot of good information. I mean, this is stuff that we as council members can use as we go out and speak to our citizens. A lot of times, you know, we, they don't really understand it, so it's like, it's good. All right. Well, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item. DS 18-040, discuss the protocol. Mr. Olson.
Mayor, toward the first of the year, we started a discussion about, about formalizing our protocol, doing some revisions to it. Staff did a substantial amount of work on it. Then you appointed a committee that reviewed it, made comments, which are included in, inside of this document that you have. I presume, has everybody got a copy of it?
I didn't bring mine. I do have a copy of it. I've been studying mine.
Do we have any extra copies that we could?
I left mine at home. I didn't know this.
Yeah.
I didn't bring extra.
Right.
We have it in a tablet. Should be in the tablet.
Yeah, should.
On our tablet.
Mm-hmm.
It's right there.
Yes, okay, so, so maybe we, Dennis, maybe you can help, Ms. Fleming, find it and make sure that everybody has access to it. So, at any rate, we, we created this governing standards and expectations, which is kind of the child of the protocol process that the council has had. The committee looked at it, made recommendations, then we brought it back to the city council. We did not get very far in that discussion. And we decided that we would table it until after the election, when we would have a new council seated, which we now have. So we're bringing it back to see if we can't continue the discussion, hopefully get to a point where, where we can get it approved in, and we're fine with, you know, if you have amendments to make to it, that's, that's fine. But at least we can have a discussion document that we can start with. And let me say this, I think that one of the most important things that we can do to move our city forward is to have a city council that works together and understands the rules. It's going to be natural that you disagree with each other, but if you disagree with each other in a way that everybody understands how it works, then I, I think we can, I think we can make more progress. I think we can move the city forward by having that common understanding. And so that's really what I'm asking you to do, is to look at this and see if, if you can't agree on pretty much everything that's in here, in, in one fashion or another. Again, I, I'm fine if you amend it, but at the end of the day, I'm hoping that the council has something here that you can say, we agree, this is how we're gonna do business. And that will help the staff a great deal, and it will help, I think, the council as it moves forward with difficult issues that it has to deal with. So with that, what I've done is asked our city attorney to walk through this document with you and see if we can't move it forward.
All right. Ms. Davis.
Thank you. I think what the plan, because I think we've heard from all of you at one time or another that you have read through the document, and I think you all have your areas of interest and questions and, and areas where you would like to discuss more. So rather than me go through every single section and talk about what's in it, what I'm going to do is, we've got the seven divisions, we're gonna start with Division 1, and it's basically the table of contents. Each section has a heading, which tells you generally what's in that section. Do you want to start with the preface?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So if everyone has their copy, the preface is before the table of contents. And rather than go through each item point by point, what I intended to do was bring up the idea of that division, or in this case, the preface. We don't have the preface up here, but if you all have the copy there in your, in your, on your pads. Is there anybody who wants to discuss anything specific about the preface?
Mrs. Nash King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under, excuse me, under council meeting expectations, each council member will discuss issues, but not personalities. With non-council members, after an issue has been voted on, a council member will speak in a manner that does not undermine the integrity of motive of the council. Okay? And my concern with that, as we know that sometimes we agree to disagree. But we take it beyond council, we take it outside the door, and we go on Facebook, and then, Mr. Mayor, we'll attack another council member. Even though that's not the decorum outside the door, but you bring that baggage in. Once you have attacked another council member, then you come back and ask as if nothing happened. How do you move forward? I think the behavior that we conduct in this meeting should also have that same respect for a council member when you're not in a meeting. So if you're talking about discussing items, then you go on Facebook, and we say, we're not gonna undermine, if you vote no, no, you vote yes, yes, the majority rule, rules according to law, the rules. So then why are we, that's my concern. If it's not gonna be effective outside the door, why are we moving forward with a piece of paper? And we have no way to hold someone accountable for the behavior, not only outside, but inside, because it will spill over into the council meeting. That's one of my concerns. Would you clarify that particular, the sentence I were at?
Okay. I think, I think the sentence is in line with what you've just expressed in a concern about, and that's what it speaks to. It speaks to, everyone is entitled to their opinion, but once the decision has been made, then you can talk about your, your feelings and your opinion about that decision, but you shouldn't attack the motives of the council members who may have voted differently than you voted. And so that's what that says. And as far as how do you enforce the rules, it's up to council to enforce the rules, they're your rules. And the very last division does speak to enforcement procedures. And then when we get to there, that's where you, as a council, will decide how you choose to enforce your rules.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Harris.
In regards, you know, I was listening to her statement, in regard, and you, you said the interpretation of it. If, like you said, there's something, I guess, because, you know, it's easier to try to say, let's keep everything in the house, when you're always on the winning side. Okay? But I will say this, ask this question, when, or rather, I should make the statement first, you said that it's okay to express your opinion about a particular vote, or ruling, or whatever that the council makes. And in, in expressing that opinion, you say, I do believe that, in my opinion, this was, this, this is what happened, this was the reason it happened, and so forth. Now, I would say, you know, it's, it's not, it, it, there's, there's a fine line between attacking a, a city council person and expressing your opinion. There's a fine line between that. And even if you mention a council person's name, that's just a matter of record, you're saying so-and-so voted on this and so forth, and, or did this and everything like that. Now, are you doing that, are you doing that maliciously to put that person down, or you're just stating that as a matter of fact? That would have to be interpreted by the council as well. Because the, the perception of being attacked is basically based on self-perception. Like I said, you know, and it's, and as a council member, one thing we have to do is we have to have thick skin. If we make a decision, we have to be able to stand by our decision and be able to explain to constituents, whether they agree with you or not, why you made that decision. Some decisions I make, I have constituents come to me and ask me about it. If it's, if it's one that's popular, then I tell them why I did it. If it's not popular, I tell them why I did it. And, but I'll just say that we have to be careful with that, because that in itself, based on perception, based on, you know, how people, what people think about something, how people feel about something, even in the majority, we have to be careful of that. And I think, based on that part right there, that it's just a matter of each council member basically using professionalism when they do things. And so, I may write something, I'm not trying to attack anybody, okay? But I am stating, I am stating my true personal opinion about something, and it may sound harsh, okay, but it's the true, it's a true professional, personal opinion about something. So I said, we have to make sure that we don't try to, whatever happens in this, in this council chambers, try to gag the council members from going out there and speaking to the public and their constituents, even those who just may have agreed or disagreed with how it went down. Because if I disagreed and other people spoke to me about, you know, disagreed as well, and I spoke to them, then I can't, you know, hold back from, oh, there's not much I could say, because, you know, somebody might feel attacked or something like that. But we have to draw that fine line between that, and I think that, that even as we do this, we have to make that, like you said, the council decides, but we have to make sure that the council doesn't infringe on anybody's freedom of speech, even as we do it here. Because any other, any other government entity, whether it be state, whether it be federal, they express their disappointments in votes and rulings all the time. And so we can't really be any special, we just have to have a thick hide and be ready to explain and give an account for what we do, whether good or bad, in the eyes of the public.
Right. I, I think you said something important two times, an important distinction. You said that I may want to talk about, council voted on something, or I may want to talk about, you know, a vote. And that's a distinction between talking about a vote or a council action, as opposed to talking about the person or the council members. And I think that's an important distinction. And when you, and I think everyone on council will understand that, and I don't think that that's anyone's intent, to try to gag someone or keep them from speaking their opinion on important issues that face the city. But I think the intent is keep the focus on the issues and not on each other personally. And I, I, I trust that all of you could do that.
That's what I'm saying. It's not about, I'm trying to gag someone from their opinion. We're going to this, I don't have a problem, but I'm not gonna personally call Mr. John Patrick out on an email. Or am I gonna be in a conversation with a citizen also attacked by Mr. John, just I put that, with Mr. John Patrick on emails and social media? That is, not that any of you are gonna have to watch this email online, but not in a type, to be a person.
Right. And that's in the, the draft protocol, and it's actually in your current protocol about not addressing individual council members. Yes. Anything else on the preface?
Mr. Johnson.
The word, trust. We can remove that. I think it's important that we respect the opinions of council members, but I don't think we have to trust their opinion. So in that first line where it says, members of Colleen City Council will respect the opinions of fellow council members.
On mine, it's highlighted, it says, committee trust and should be removed.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about?
And, and if the majority of you agree to remove that, then that is no problem.
You guys want that removed?
Yeah, sure.
That was the recommendation, so.
Yeah, because, yeah.
I was gonna ask him.
Mr. Harris.
Now, in, in stating a, a council member's name, I'll ask this question. If that's just a matter of, if, if, if your constituents ask, and they say, okay, who were the people who voted against it? I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell them. Okay, these are the people who voted against it because they asked. And so that's, 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 like I said, even in the mentioning of council member's name, I understand, like I said, and it's not, like even in my opinion, it's not attacking, it's a, it's a matter of public record. I mean, you're expressing public record already, and you're telling what's already either in, in the paper, in the minutes, and so forth, you say, the, uh, these are the members who, the members who voted against this, because that's a part of accountability. And I feel like if you're, if you, if you can't handle your name, you know.
That's public record anyway. I mean, it's there in the minutes, it's there in the video, you can see it, so.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, but even if you mention the name, okay, even if you mention the name, and say this person, and you, and you just keep it respectful, say, the members who voted, voted for or against this particular thing were so, 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 and so, and so, and so, and you're just keeping it straightforward like that, that's just stating public record. And at that point in time, if anyone gets offended, like I said, that's part of being held accountable for what you do. I mean, you can't be afraid of people to know, I mean, you can't be afraid of people know you voted against something or voted for something. As long as it's not used maliciously as, as an attack, in that sense, because you can tell the difference between the attack and, you know, and stating public record, then I think the mentioning of names, because if somebody put my name in there, and I voted for it that way, then I did. If anybody asks me, I'll, I'll explain to them why. Okay, because.
I think, I think we're taking it too much, because I think, my perspective, you know, we're, we're in politics, and we're gonna get chewed out. You know, my thing is delete. I don't take anything personal. You can chew me out, you can use my name as you want, doesn't bother me. And so, when you get into this business, politician, you gotta know that. So, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, yes, so.
We don't need to get it too, too carried away on here.
Right, right. If you just mention their name and says, these were the voting members, and you go on from there, that shouldn't be disallowed, because you're just stating, like I said, factually, public record. But now, if you start saying now, so-and-so, this is what they did, I think this was wrong, and everything like that, that's a different story. And, but otherwise, just stating the, the public record of names, that should be allowed.
And I, I think the way that the rules are written does allow that, as long as it's factual. Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think everybody understands that, that comment. It's we're adding an adjective with those names, those, those irresponsible council persons who voted against it. That's attacking.
Yes, that, yeah, okay.
Mention the name of those who voted for or not. But where in social media it has appeared before is adding an adjective or an action verb, which is defamatory toward those who voted for it or against it. That should not be condoned by this council, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Davis.
So, and that's actually not even in the preface? So do we have any more questions about the preface?
So, we move on.
All right. So on the preface, we will take out trust and, and then everything else will remain as is.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Division 1, and this is the one that generally covers, it's the largest section in the new draft. It includes your former protocol, it includes the way that you conduct your meetings, it can, it includes the order of items, it includes how to get things on the agenda, the types of meetings that you have, how you make a quorum, the order of business, consideration of ordinances, resolutions, motions, and their formats, general procedures, decorum, staff relations, statements by public officials regarding litigation, and dispersment of council-requested information. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about those?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Page 1, Section 130, types of meetings, 130B. The last. The last sentence on that page. I'd like for us to discuss a clarification. This, this is the way it has always been. But we've, we've, we've moved away from this in the past three to five months. I don't, can't tell when we put a finger on it, but it was, states, "The mayor will allow any citizen to participate in discussion at a work session, but only as recognized by the mayor. The mayor may end citizen participation or work session in order to allow the city council to proceed with discussion." What we've practiced in the, in the last, that was in the old one, it's in the new one. What we've practiced lately is any one of the council members recognize, I want to recognize the person to speak, and then they vote on it. This, that has not been our protocol. Our protocol has been, the mayor determines by chairing the agenda. If that can, it's totally different at a business executive session, because then citizens sign up for that and there's procedures for that. But at a work session, it has always been information discussions amongst the council members with, with the audience.
I appreciate you pointing that out.
Just, I open it up for, open it up for discussion.
Which one was that one again?
It's, uh, section 130, on page one. Oh, 130B. It's the last, last sentence. I just think we need to discuss, how, how do we want to, to conduct business like we always have been? Or as, as we have started?
We'll follow the protocol. That's why we're here, follow the protocol.
Okay.
The only thing that was changed there, and I have highlighted as that B, 120-B. There was something there, and that's highlighted. And it says, "Committee should only take one council member to place an item on the work session." And, whereas it said two before. Mr. Menke.
I had a question on that, just on the committee that looked at that. It was two at some point in time for a reason. I don't know if that was in the anticipation of a second, if it ever got to that point. There was some reason, and I don't know if it was just a, you know, make sense test or a, you know, something like that. But it, you know, being the new guy on the block, someone with some more experience.
Well, I think, I think the main reason for that is because as, as a body, you know, we want to guide the staff on priorities. And so, when we work as a body and we say, we want the city manager to work on this and that, and that, then any council member can just throw something in there. And sometimes it requires staff work. And they have to kind of veer to doing something else that maybe one person may want or something like that. So that's kind of why we, we, we always want to try to stick to the priorities that the council wants.
And that's why we have two council members to put an item on the agenda. Is that correct?
To put it on. And then what we normally do is we try to get a consensus to make sure that the majority wants that. You know, if they want to assign the staff to do that and move it forward or not, you know, so.
So if, if a citizen has an issue that I feel like is something that affects the city, I need to get another council member to say, hey, will you agree with me to get this as an agenda? And I need to explain the case to him or her.
Yeah. And most of the time, and, and the thing that we're trying to do here, too, is most of the time, the staff can take care of it. You know, so always, you know, check with the city manager. Because I get a lot of stuff, too, and.
Yeah, I don't mean blow down signs or things like that.
Yeah.
I'm talking about something that's, you know.
And, and, and get with the city manager. Because a lot of times, they may agree and say, you know what? Yeah, this is something that needs to be brought up. And so, that we can talk to other council members and, because, because I think, I don't know what the protocol is. You know, we don't communicate, and that's one of the things, I'm sure they told you, you know, like, we don't mass email each other and all that, because.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand.
So the challenge to communicate with other members is usually through the city manager or myself, so.
Okay. So back to the protocol, two council members need to agree for it to become, okay.
Well, that's the proposal.
That's in the proposed draft, correct?
Proposed draft.
Oh, okay, okay.
So here it says, "Committee should only take one council member to place an item." So it's up to you. Mr., Mr. Harris.
I was going to say, like you said, this, this is the proposed protocol. But the protocol now is one council member can bring something and submit something, and the entire council votes on whether or not to bring it forward. And in my opinion, that's the way it should stay, simply because when you, when you say, when you say that the mayor can bring something forward, you know, just by himself or to council members, that's being, that's being unfair. Okay? Because the, the, the council members, like yourself, you were elected by the people to be their representative. The mayor, although he represents, you know, he represents it still, but yet, he was elected to be the figurehead, if you will, the face of Colleen. And so, what ends up happening is we end up having some of our authority taken away, some, some of our, you know, our power taken away, because we have to go for a second, to a second person now to get it approved. Even now, as it says, you know, try to contact another council member through the city manager or the mayor. No, I mean, if I just want, if, if I just want to contact you and say, hey, can I talk to you about something? Then I can come to you. But now, as long as you don't go to her and you don't go to him, then we're fine. We can just, we can talk about that. But otherwise, it even makes it more difficult if we have to get a second approved. Because if I go to you first and you say no, then I have to go to somebody else. And if they say no, then all of a sudden, now, now, now I'm in the situation of, okay, I got, you know, I have, like, one more person I can go to. Who can I go to to try to get to approve this? So if a citizen comes to, comes to us individually and you have something that you believe is important as well, you should be able to put that on the agenda for the entire council to vote on, because it will make no difference anyway. Because even if it was two, the entire council would still have to vote on it, and they could approve it or disapprove it. And for, like I said, for the mayor to be able to do it by himself, and it's not throwing any rocks at you, but for the mayor to be able to do it by himself is almost discriminatory against the citizens who elected us to be their representatives. So the face of Colleen gets to bring on what they want to bring on anytime they want to by themselves. But the representatives, we have to get approval, and that's biased. That's, that's not working in balance, because even the charter doesn't give that authority to the mayor. And one thing we have to be careful of is that the protocol that we try to put in place does not outdo the, does not violate the charter. Because the charter gives the mayor specific duties, specific roles as well, and it gives a council member specific duties and roles and authorities. And that's why we have to make sure that we don't overstep. So in my opinion, we keep it like it is. One council member can bring something forward, and the council can vote it, vote it up to the discussion or vote it down. And that way, at least the citizens know that it won't, they, they're not talking to their council member in vain. Otherwise, they'll just all go to him, because he can make the decision like that. Okay? So that will, that, that will create a big imbalance, and that will create a big imbalance between our representation to our citizens and, you know, and, and our constituents individually as well. So I think it should definitely stay the same. And it's not bad for it to stay the same. Nothing's going to change. He brings stuff forward, we bring stuff forward. But at the same time, I think this also, that when we get down to it, as far as things being brought up for approval, just as we had to get approval from the council, then I think the mayor should also as well, because he is still part of the council. There, there's nothing, there was nothing super special or super, you know, you know, you know, extravagant about him that it should be allowed that, I got, I have something I want to bring on so I can bypass, bypass the council's will and bring it on. The city manager, as I said before last week, if he identifies something that he believes is a priority, then he can bring that on. But at the same time, we still, in order to get what we brought on, what we, what we have been allowed to bring forward ourselves, he, he, he can pick, he can pick something that's a priority to him. But yet, our, our priorities individually still work their way up the ladder in order, the way they were received, they were received. Otherwise, we'll keep getting kicked down the ladder, kicked down the ladder, and they may never, they may never get up to a discussion. So that's my thought on that, and.
So, so the recommendation from the committee is it should be one council member? Everybody okay with that?
Yes, yes. Because if you give away that authority, then you shouldn't be a council member.
For there, you made sense. You know, there's something that you, it is going to sound weird, because, yeah, because what he said right there is if I'm a council member and I talk to Mr. Johnson and he says, no, I don't want to do it, then you have to talk to different council members, and you might create a quorum.
Yeah.
So that part, I say, you know what? That, that, that's true. And so, you know, because you can't talk to anybody else, so.
You only got two chances.
Yeah. And so, the way we've been doing it, it's probably the better. So what we've been doing is we put it on a workshop as an item, and then you don't have to talk to anybody. You just have to come in and present. And then the council either has to vote on it, you have to have a majority, either four to three, to continue that discussion or not. And I think that's probably the way we should, probably should continue, so. All right?
It's not addressed in the charter.
Yeah. So is everybody okay with two or one, or what's the deal? We got a consensus, what?
Keep it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is, leave it the way it is, leave it the way it is? I'm, I'm okay with it. Okay. All right. We'll leave it the way it is.
Anything else in division one?
Mrs. Nash King.
There is a time limit in Roberts' rules. I think it's nine minutes. So I don't know that that's really going to help you. But what you all.
What you asked for?
I know, that's right.
I have more time?
What you all can do right now, though, is reach an agreement on, on what you believe to be a reasonable time limit. Because you're right, everyone has read it, everyone has an opinion, and you can state your opinion.
And, and I think the easiest way to do this, because I'm just going through the highlights. And if you go through the highlights and discuss them, and I think we can move a lot faster. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm already, I'm.
Items that I do want to add.
There might be some other items.
Yes. We can move on with the highlights, but there are some things that we want to address.
Okay. So Kathy?
I, I'm just waiting for.
So I'm going to move on. I'm going to do this, and then we'll add some of the things.
Mr. Johnson has a question.
Mr. Johnson?
Just one on section 1-10. Is there a way we can put that in to where there's a requirement that, no later than 60 days after the new council is seated, that we review this annually, that way we know?
It's already in the end section. It talks about reviewing in June, June after council, by June, I think, is the date.
By June.
In the last division. 7-20. By the end of June each year.
Isn't it section?
Section 7-20 on page 31.
The very last page, before the attachments. Page 31.
Council will re-adopt these governing standards.
Right. After the new city council is elected and seated, the new city council shall review and re-adopt these governing standards and expectations by a majority vote of all council members present and voting by the end of June each year.
Say it again?
On section 7-20, 7-20.
On page 31.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the new council.
All right. Mr. Kilpatrick.
On 1-90.
Well, you jumped way ahead.
Staff for elections, so, page 10, 1-99. And then it also goes to the same thing as in section 4-50, they say the same thing. "Motions of direction to the city manager. During a work session or regular meeting, discussion may lead to a point where the council wishes to direct the city manager to a particular manner. The appropriate way to accomplish this is for the city, the council member to make a motion." We don't, we've never made motions in a work session. We do consensus. But throughout this, in several points, it talks about the way that you do that to give the, the city manager guidance is a council member will make a motion, and then it will get a second. And then if it gets a section, then it's elected on. We, we, I mean, we vote. If approved by the majority of the council members in attendance, the motion of direction becomes the official direction of the council and will be transcribed and maintained on record.
Yeah. And I remember that came about because nobody wanted to show that, what they were voting for in the workshop. They wanted it. And so, we had issues years ago, even though that is, so I don't know.
Well, it, it's not about how you're voting on items that are coming in front of you. It's when you're giving directions to staff, such as, do we want to bring this item onto the agenda or not? Or it's kind of like what we're doing tonight.
Yeah.
Do we want this section to stay as, as it is, or do we want to change it? And then one council member will say, I want it to be 75% and green. And then another council member will go, well, I'm okay with 75%, but I'd rather have teal. Well, then, you know, and so it gets really confusing. And then by the time we get to the end, and then the mayor will say, okay, staff, you know, do you have your guidance? And a lot of times, we don't, we're not really sure what the official guidance was. So rather than try to guess or hope that we got it right, then what this will do is ask council to decide on one, one order of direction for the city manager, and for the council to say, yes, that is what we all want the city manager and the staff to do. And then that way, at the end of the day, when we leave here, the city manager knows exactly what council is asking.
But he's saying, we do it just like we do a regular motion. Instead of just a consensus, then it's going to be a motion.
Yes.
And so, everything we do in the workshop, we want it to be that way format. So like, you know, we're talking about bringing something forward. Instead of just having a consensus, do we want to bring something forward? We're going to say, does somebody make a motion to bring that forward? Is that what we want, everything?
Specifically states, "During a work session or regular meeting, discussions may lead to a point where the council wishes to direct the city manager in a particular manner. The appropriate way to accomplish this is for a council member to make a motion in which the city manager is directed towards or away from a particular course of action. There must be a second and a vote on the motion. If approved by the majority of the council members in attendance, the motion of direction becomes the official direction of the council and will be transcribed and maintained on the record." That's the very same sentence or paragraph is on page 21, section 450, "Motions of direction to city manager."
Yeah. That's good. That's how we'll do it. Everybody okay with that, right? We're going to run it just like a regular council meeting.
I'm okay, I'm okay with it. It does away with the consensus.
Yeah. It does away. Now, we're going to just regular, regular motions and seconds.
A motion, a second, so we will have motions and.
Seconds at workshop.
And work sessions.
Thank you.
But, but I, but I think it's, it's important to distinguish that these will be motions of direction to me. They're not going to be motions of decisions on the items you're dealing with.
Right.
That's a very important distinction.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Mrs. Fleming, do you want to say something?
Yes, I, I was agreeing with one thing, agreeing with Mr. Olson, because we may as well not have a business meeting. We're going to sit here and vote on an item already here. You know? What I wanted to say is, is seven of us, when there's an issue on the floor and each council member is addressing that issue, and before other members can even raise their hand, some members are speaking two and three times and not giving other council members a chance to even voice their opinion. So I think once a council member speaks on an issue, they can't come back and continue speaking on that same issue. And I think that's somewhere in the charter, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
It's in the protocol. It's in your current protocol.
And I think we should address that.
Page five.
Okay. I think we should address that, because it happens all the time.
Right.
So you can only speak on an item once.
Once, and not come back and continue and, and just kick that can down the road all the time.
I like that. That's, that's a good one there.
Been done here, because I, I look and, and I just get really frustrated.
One item. How many times can you ask a question?
I've heard it answered three or four times here.
So what's the protocol?
Protocol says, "City council deliberations. The chair has the responsibility to control the discussion and the order of speakers. Council members will generally be called upon in the order of the request to speak. Generally, a council member may not be recognized to speak subsequently until each council member has had an opportunity to obtain the floor. A council member holding the floor may address a question to another council member, and that council member may, should they desire, choose, respond to the question while the floor is still held by the council member asking the question."
Now, you opened up a can of worms there.
Yeah.
Why you, why you do that for?
Yes, you did.
That's not how we did it. Mr. Olson.
Just, just as a preview, we're getting ready to do the remodeling on our city council chambers. I would anticipate a couple of things. Number one, both our business meetings and our work sessions will take place in that room. In other words, we won't be moving around once that's remodeled appropriately. And the other thing is that we'll have. And the other thing is that we'll have, we'll have some kind of an electronic system there where when somebody wants to talk, they'll push a button, that you'll be able to recognize them. And, and, and they will show up on your screen in the order they pushed their button, so that you'll be able to say, this person is first, this person is second, this person is third, and you'll be able to go through the list when they, when they push their button to speak. And I'm gonna have a button too, by the way.
It's gonna be like Family Feud, everybody can get to their buttons first.
No, that was, what you said, it's kind of like an oxymoron. It says the chair controls the meetings, but then the council members can direct each other. And it's like, that's...
Then may address a question to that council member while they have the floor. But to address Ms. Fleming...
They still have to be recognized.
Every council member has a chance to speak. The mayor will ensure they have a speak before one council member gets three or four attempts.
That's what I was addressing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this has happened, and you all know it.
Wait, did I get around yet? Everybody had a chance? I got it.
You know, it's no joke on that.
Follow rules of order, and this council unit states. We have to follow Robert's Rules of Order, am I correct?
Partially correct.
Could you please clarify that?
Yes, what your rules say is that you will follow Robert's Rules of Order unless these rules call for something different. And in your current protocol rules, there are a few areas where it strays from Robert's rules.
So if we decide today, I mean, yeah, and we vote on this, and we agree to this, you're telling me Robert's Rules of Order is completely out of the law?
No, what these rules, as proposed today, what they state is that the, these, okay, so we follow Robert's rules, we follow these rules first, your protocol rules that you as a body decide upon. And then if that doesn't address it, then you follow Robert's Rules of Order. But what it says, and I think this is very important for a small governmental body, because you have to remember, Robert's Rules is not intended to govern small bodies. It's intended to govern large groups of people. And as a way to control large groups of people, you don't have those same issues when you're all able to sit around the table talking face to face. That's why it's important to be able to amend Robert's Rules to suit what you need as a small governmental body. But what this, what these rules also say is that if you don't, you can't use Robert's Rules as a weapon, basically. So if someone doesn't follow Robert's Rules, or if an action is taken not quite in compliance with Robert's Rules, that's not going to nullify your, your ruling, or your decision as a council. And then it also says that overall, nothing is, in these rules is intended to take away any of your power as a council to decide how you want to do business. So ultimately, what this says is, council, these are your meetings, it's your group, you decide how you want to govern yourselves. And then you use Robert's Rules as a tool to help you, but not as a weapon. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay.
And that's all included in Section one dash seventy. If you wanted to read that a little closer, Section A, subsection A.
But that's why I have a note on that, one seven, if we all, if we're gonna go around this one, because I don't want...
Okay.
So we want to just continue on some of the highlights, and then if you have something between there, then just, we'll talk about it. But right now, the next highlight I had was at one dash fifty, there was a highlight there, order of business. And I think that's just city manager, I don't know if he has anything. It had something said about alternate meeting times, or format, excuse me, format.
Mr. Mayor, I am withdrawing my entire thinking on that process.
All right.
So I don't want to talk about an alternate.
There you go, good, smart move. And then the next one...
I would be so happy if you could get through this, and I don't want to make it more complicated than it's already going to be.
The next one was one seventy B, there's a highlight there. In the absence of the mayor pro tem, the city council will choose a chair for the meeting. And the notes on that was committee, when the mayor pro tem is elected, council should also elect an alternative, an alternate. So it's either elect or just elect at that meeting, at that meeting. So we leave it the same, is everybody okay with? Okay, Ms. Fleming?
No, I was just gonna, something just went through my mind. I don't know if, I had brought this up to you last year. And I know they do it in Harker Heights, is to allow each council member to get the experience of being a mayor pro tem for six months at a time. I know they do that in Harker Heights, so I was just wondering, have you ever thought about trying that here?
Doing a mayor pro tem, I don't know.
Giving them at least six months' experience, so that if their time does come, they will have that experience. Just something to throw out. I think that would be good, if each person could get that experience for six months at a time.
And in the past, in the past, it's, I don't know, you know, I know that, not this council, but in the past, it's always like their senior that moves into that. It's, and it's obviously, it's elected by the council, so...
Yeah, I realize that, you go by seniority.
Yeah.
Who's next in line to, for six months, yeah.
But that's up to you, what do you guys want to do? It's like, leave it the same.
We're in Harker Heights, and it works pretty well, you know, giving everybody the opportunity to get that experience.
Sounds good to me.
Mrs. Nash King?
Would you like that? Okay. I spoke to Mr. Jones, liberal, that's in Harker Heights City Council, and the mayor appoints his mayor pro tem, they do not vote on the mayor pro tem. The mayor appoints who he wants. We just talked about this at the radio. And my other, to add on to what she said, I wrote in my notes, that the mayor should appoint a council member in the absence of the mayor pro tem. Because mayor, you are the face of our city, and whomever you choose to pick is the second person to charge that it be the face. And I think that that is, you don't have many rocks. You don't, you don't really have many, you know, things to do. And that is just something that you harbor as gets selected as the mayor that represents our city.
Can I just quickly resolve this issue?
Ms. Davis?
Okay, the charter answers this question, and it says, the council shall elect a mayor pro tem from their number, who shall act as mayor during the absence and disability of the mayor. So your charter says, council elects, the mayor doesn't appoint, and it's one mayor pro tem, and it can't rotate. So that's, that's resolved by the charter.
Moving on, because charter supersedes all of that.
But I bring it in.
And the next one is one...
Seventy?
One seventy...
K?
Seventy K?
K, yeah. Communication with applicants and petitioners. Committee questioned whether there should be a time limit to requirements.
I can explain that a little bit. What this section says is that if a, if a council member is going to have a discussion with the petitioner or someone who is bringing an item before council, and council's going to vote on that item, you need to disclose the fact that you've been discussing that issue with that petitioner or with that applicant. And so the question is, it's, it doesn't specify a timeframe, and so the committee wondered, should there be a timeframe? I mean, I, I think it says, if you've talked about this item, that's a limiter by itself. So I don't know if you want to say six months ago or a year ago, but if it is about the same case, whether it happened six months ago or a year ago, does that make a difference to you? So is the, the more important aspect, how long ago you spoke with the petitioner? Or is it, is the more important aspect, did you talk to them about the case that council's going to be voting on?
So, in other words, but, you know, it's okay if you spoke to them over twelve months ago. So the twelve months would be the time period, is that...
That's, that's up to council if you want to put a time limit.
So, so no time limit? So we just leave it like it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I agree, everybody okay, right? We're moving on, man, we're moving. We're breaking ground here. We're on page seven.
We made it past the preface this time.
Then the next one?
No, yes.
Next one is that item number nine, duty to vote. All council members must vote either in the affirmative or the negative. A present member who does not vote will be officially recorded as a negative vote, which is true, it's a no vote. And then the committee should not apply to MPT...
Mayor pro tem.
Election.
Which doesn't really apply anyway, because we don't make a motion and vote on that. We do it by nomination, so I don't, I don't...
So we're okay with the way it is?
So I have a question.
Harris.
Yes, so like we, so if we have a council member not vote, you know, last year, when we voted on the mayor pro tem, one particular council member abstained from voting, then how would, how, well, that's right, you broke the tie, right? Now, would that council member's, so the way we're saying now, that council member's vote would still be abstained, and the mayor would make the final vote, would that council member's vote be considered? If it was a negative vote, who's it a negative towards, if they don't vote for anybody?
Right. And actually, when you're voting in a nominating situation, you're not really voting against someone, you're only voting for someone. So if there's one or more applicants, then you raise your hand and vote for someone, but you're not voting against anyone anyway. So really, and the person who has the most yes votes wins the election.
So in the event, in the event of somebody abstaining...
They just don't count.
And so then the, then the mayor breaks the tie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So are we okay with that, the way it's currently written then?
Yeah, I think we are.
With that explanation, okay.
So that one's okay, so delete that. The next one is number eleven, personal communication devices.
At page eleven, sir?
Oh, that's...
On page eight?
Page eight, oh, okay.
We're still on page eight, number twelve.
Number eleven there, on page eight.
Okay.
It says personal, it says, if an individual is using his or her personal communication right during a meeting, and member finds it disruptive, he should inform the mayor. And it says, committee emphasize disruptive. If this is not disrupting the meeting, then it's not a problem.
Right, I think there was a concern that it may be used kind of as a weapon against other council members if they just see someone look at their phone, that person's looking at their phone, and they're disrupting a meeting. So I think that it wanted, they wanted to emphasize that it actually needs to be disrupting, such as going off a lot, or buzzing, or disturbing people. Not just the fact that someone simply looks at their phone, or looks at their...
Sometimes I put notes in my phone, and I go back and look at some of my notes when I...
So we're okay with the way it is, finds it disrupting, he or she should inform the mayor, so that's okay. Then the next one is dress code. It is policy, city council create a dignified and professional environment. And the committee put in there, council members are not paid a clothing allowance.
They're paid for their clothes.
Is this appropriate? Well, they're not paid much. So I mean, you gotta take all that, you're not paid to be here. That's gotta be yours, Harris, right?
It's not mine, it's not mine, no, no, I'm just gonna make, I'm just gonna make a comment on it, it's not mine. But I just think that we have a, I think right now, we have a pretty good expectation of what the dress is. You know, when we come, when we come to workshops, it's a workshop. And, you know, we don't, we don't come, you know, come out all, you know, just whatever, but we, you know, we come in jeans, you know, a decent shirt and everything like that and so forth. So I think we got that, but of course, council meetings, we already established that we come in either, you know, polo shirts, you know, ties, and, you know, jack, you know, things that are still professional, you know, so I think...
I think we're all adults, we know how to do that.
I think we have that down, yeah.
Get my motorcycle next week, okay? I have my gear on next week.
So moving on to the next page, it's number two.
So take, so take that, leave it, wait, take the, yes, what are we doing?
Dress code, what was it? It's just leave it the way it is.
So leave the dress code in, or take the dress code out?
No, I'd say leave it in.
We need to leave it in, just in case somebody want to come with their back out, and they ask that these to be in there.
Now, I think, I think at that point, I think we'll, we'll, we'll be able to, yeah.
Inappropriately, and that's not...
All right, well...
Leave it in.
Are we talking about dress code?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Menke?
No, I, I just think, for consistency with the rules, I think we talk about decorum at some point, and it talks about, you know, your actions as if you were in a court of law, or a house of worship, or that type of thing. So I think we need to approach the meetings with a professional attitude, and I think our appearance should reflect that. Now, that's in the eye of the holder, I understand that, but I think, I think as a group, I think for the citizens and...
So you want to leave it in there, or take it out?
We could take it out.
But what's it currently say?
And it just talks about dress code. Should we tell people that they need to dress, or is that common sense?
Well, I think it should stay the way it is.
Stay?
Stay then.
Mr. Rivera?
No one tells me how to dress. No one ain't gonna tell me how to dress, I'm sorry.
I, I, I've been to your house, your wife tells you how to dress all the time.
Never lied, that's what I was gonna say. You don't, you don't lie, you don't lie. But, but, hold on a second. I haven't said nothing all night, so I'm gonna say what I gotta say.
Say it.
When it comes to dress code, you represent a citizen. And you should know better how to come to a meeting like this one. You represent, some of us represent the entire city, some of you represent twelve, fifteen, sixteen thousand people. The way you dress, for me, is the way they want, the citizen wants to see you. Okay? So, yes, I do believe that you don't have to tell me how to dress to come to a meeting, but, yeah, we go to church, I dress up the best I can. I come to this meeting, I want to dress the best I can, so...
So you want to leave it in, or take it out?
I just want to make sure. We all look professional, I never seen anybody around looking sloppy, so I just leave it in.
Leave it in, I think we got a consensus to leave it in, or do we? What was?
Yes.
There you go.
There you go, there you go.
There you go, Mr. Menke, let's start that. Mr. Menke makes a motion to leave it in.
I'll second it.
Mr. Rivera seconds it. All those in favors, just raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed. Mrs. Nash King? Mrs. Nash King? Mrs. Nash King, are you opposed or against leaving it in? You didn't vote.
What was the majority?
Uh-oh.
Leave it in. All right, thank you. So there you go. We're starting to do this the right way.
But that's only under directions to the city manager.
I know it, he's doing a good job. It's called mayor's training.
Direction for me to leave it in.
Yeah, these directions, yes.
All right, moving on, the next page, we have item number two, which is addressing city council. A person wishes to address the city council on any matter. Listed on the agenda may be recognized by the chair. I'm gonna skip all the way down where it says there, addresses the city council. Speaker shall approach the lectern and give his or her name and address before speaking. So the question here is, committee, citizens should not be required to provide their home address.
No, they shouldn't, for their safety. That's on TV, that's everywhere. I was being against it, Mr. Mayor. So I want to come to speak, we want to know their name, but I don't want to know their address. It could be negative or positive.
All right, Mr. Menke?
I have one caveat to that personally. I agree with, with Mr. Rivera that there is a security issue, but I think it's important for the council to understand who they're listening to. Because it's very different to be listening to a citizen of Colleen as opposed to maybe a property investor of Colleen. Which, just anyone who asks for time, we don't do that. So somehow, in some method, in some method, either through the registration process...
Well, they can still fill out the information, and we just don't read it.
Right, I mean, as long as we can verify, so we understand that we are actually...
And then the secretary lets us know, when we get it.
But I think it's important that we know the difference. We're hearing from someone who has a concern about, you know, property they own, but they live in somewhere else. That, that, that's a factor, I mean, to me it is.
All right, so what is the motion?
I would say state name and city where they live in.
You making a motion?
Where they work, but where they live in.
So you making a motion?
I make the motion to the citizen when they come to speak to the city council, state their name and the city where they live in, not where they work in, but where they live in.
All right.
May I add something?
Can I ask for clarification?
Nobody has to say.
Okay, hold on, hold on, let me get one at a time, Mrs., hold on.
No.
Mrs. Fleming, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have something?
I was agreeing with, with Mr. Menke to make sure that we have their address on the application.
On the application.
That was gonna be my next thing, for the voice record of the meeting, name and city, but somewhere, and somehow, we need to know it before they say it. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
So Mr., did, was that, was that it?
Yes.
But, but, Mr. Mayor, there's one thing that we're missing is, is some situation where we would have citizens from another city come to speak to us. People that have business in our city, they pay taxes in our city.
They do it all the time, but we still recognize them, as long as it's part of that, that, that agenda item.
What the item is all about.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify. No, they're, they're free to speak, and, and what they have to say is often beneficial. But as a council member, I like to know, am I hearing from a citizen I represent? Or am I hearing from someone who has a business interest in the city that may be very important, that I'm very interested in?
And a lot of times, the business people also give their business address. So we, so we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of, uh, just having them name and city of registration. Raise your right hand. All right. So there you go. See? Always something good happens out of challenging things. All right, we're moving on to the next page. There's nothing there. Okay, what item number?
Uh, item number five.
Number five. No disruptions?
Persons in attendance shall not carry signs or placards. We see that, and I've never seen a, uh, any citizen told to take down that placard, take off that T-shirt, take off that.
Placards, like what, political, political placards?
Well, no, they, they carry signs supporting, uh, friends of the library came in, we, and then they had red T-shirts, you know. I thought so. So the new edition says you cannot carry, shall not carry signs or placards.
That's under what? No disruptions? Yeah, I see it. No, all attendance shall not carry signs or pla, shall attend any city council meeting, shall delay the proceedings. Okay? Everybody okay with that?
Well, not from the T-shirts, but it was prohibit carrying signs or any banners, or we had people do that, and banners go on the back walls. Stay in there, they can get in the view of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, so we're okay with that?
Uh, 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 Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to page 10. Go back, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, by the com, um, let's see. I, I'll just, I'll just say on this, on the signs, uh, that's, that's, I, I think in regards to possible disruptions, like, you know, Kathy said about the sign, you know, um, obstructing the camera views, then maybe we should just have, you know, um, 'cause I mean, peo, people are allowed to carry those things into different meetings and so forth, and things like that. But if, if, if somebody, I'm not saying, I can't, I don't know if I can really agree to say they, they can't bring them in. But if you have a designated area, if you have a sign, this is your area back here at the back of the room, or something like that, where you can't disrupt, you can't get in the, in the view of the camera or disrupt anything, but you have a designated area. If you have some type of sign, this is where you, this is where you are located. Beyond this point, your signs can't be used, because they will disrupt the meeting through cameras, or whatever else you deem as disruptions. But, um, I, I, I want to say, although the sign, I mean, like I said, some sign may be for or against you, something, you know, you, whatever. But I wanna say that we possibly may still wanna allow people to express themselves, as long as it's not vulgar, inappropriate.
A lot of times, they do it outside. You know, outside, they can, they demonstrate, they.
Well, 'cause I, 'cause I know some people brought signs inside before, and, uh, they held them up. And, uh, but like I said, as long as, you know, they have a designated area, uh, they're not vulgar signs or anything like that. Um, I mean, I don't see any problem in the end with people being able to express their agreement or disagreement for or against something. As long as they're staying in their designated area, and they don't disrupt.
So I think, uh, we're gonna have to make a motion and vote on this one.
Before you do that, can I make a comment?
Sure.
For the lawyer point of view, where I get nervous as the lawyer, is when we have to read someone's sign, and sign whether it gets to stay or gets to go, because that's where you are in violation, or can be in violation of First Amendment rights.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I prefer either all signs or no signs, because that's a very clear rule. Everyone understands it. It doesn't put, you know, the police officer in the, in the, you're having to determine whether that's an okay sign or not, or the mayor, or anyone else. The clearer, the better. It keeps us out of trouble.
We're okay leaving it the same.
I make a motion that, uh, item number five remains as is.
Motion and second by Mr. Menke. Leaving it as is. All those in favor, just raise your right hand. Oh, all right. So we got it. I like this.
We work it together.
Where's that mayor's training 101 that? There you go. You guys are doing a good job. I'm always learning. All right, next is I, page 10. And page 10, I didn't see anything. So unless anybody got anything, we're going through that one. Page 11. And it's just a big draft, so there's really nothing there. So now we're moving into page 12, Division City Council Policies, Operating Procedures. And, uh, nothing there, except there it is, uh, section 220. And it's item number seven, and it has to do with attendance. So a member of the city council may not commit to membership or participating in or attending a meeting of organizations not listed in section A without approval of the mayor or the city council. I don't know which section A is. What is that?
Which, which one are you on, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Section tw, 220.
Twenty, okay. Travel and business expenses.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah. Says one committee member thinks this should be, and while the other thinks it.
Right. If, if I can just explain real quickly. So what one through seven is, are the, the seminars or training events that council members generally attend. And, and they're the standard ones that everyone goes to. So what this says is, if a council member wants to go to a meeting, or an event, or a, a training, I'm sorry, that's not on this list, the way it's written is, if that person gets the approval of the mayor or the council, then they can go. And one of the committee members thought that it should be, that they must receive the approval of the mayor and the city council. So that's the question.
No, it's just the body as a whole, right? That's what we mean?
Right. And where you would have the hangup, if you're requiring the approval of the council as a whole, it's going to delay it a couple of weeks to get the item, because it would require being on your agenda and approved by resolution in order for that one council member to be approved to go, if you require the approval of council.
So.
Add the city manager on there as well, because he's got authority.
I think his is separate. He's got, he goes to more stuff than us.
Okay, 'cause I just wanted to know, he needs to approve it as well.
Well, as a practical matter, there's gonna be a budget limitation. So when you adopt the budget, each council member, or the council as a whole, gets a certain amount of money. The only time I'm gonna get involved with that is when you're out of money, and you wanna go do something. I'm gonna say, you're out of money.
Out of money, okay. What if we pay our own way?
Go anywhere you want.
Okay.
Go anywhere you want, if you pay.
I can take off.
Vegas, I must.
Times I do that a lot.
Mr. Mayor, may I, uh, may I ask the city manager, I've been on the council for three years. I've never in my life heard of anybody going to a National League of Cities of a council member that we're paying for to Washington DC, our National League of Cities Annual Congress of Cities. Uh, they said those are standard meetings. I've never heard of those. Have we ever had a council member, other than the mayor? Other than the mayor?
Yeah, no, I get their emails all the time, and I don't go to those. The only one I go to is the Mayor's Conference AUSA. That's pretty much it.
I'm just referring to a council member.
What's your question? Has anybody from here ever done it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Not, not since.
Now, now, some of them may apply, 'cause they'll, like, I got an invite to go to Missouri, but then they're paying for it. And I think that's part of the mayor's league of cities, so.
Right.
It has nothing, you know, the city doesn't have to pay. They just said, mayor pays for that. They're, they're paying for that.
This would also apply to the mayor. It's not just council. So these are.
Then I, I would want that, that clarified, that the, the mayor's attendance to the National League of Cities and, and everything. Seven council members getting paid by the city to go to, uh, a vacation in Atlanta, Georgia, to go to a congress of cities, taking the taxpayers' money to go to that, for what? I mean, I mean, if you give it to one, then all seven can go. And, and in three years, I've never heard of it being announced that there is a meeting gonna be held, and, uh, does anybody want to go? We do for AUSA, and we do for, uh, TMLs.
And that's about it?
But that's it.
Right. Because it starts off saying, subject to available funding. And so I guess if a council member feels that one of these ones that's more out of the ordinary would be beneficial for whatever reason, and then they can't go to TML, or they can't go to some of the other ones, because they've spent their allotment, basically.
Mr. Harris.
And, um, that, that's basically what I was gonna say. Um, if a council member actually finds, and like I said, you, 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 you're, um, depending on the integrity of the council member. And if the council member, in my opinion, finds, finds somewhere to, finds somewhere to go that they believe is beneficial to them, then, you know, as far as staying in their allotment, then I think they should, they should be able to go. Now, when they spend, when they spend their allotment, when their allotment runs out, that's that. But, um, but I, like I said, but I think if, like I said, if, if you, if you've been to TML five times, and, okay, I want something new, and you find something, then if, if, if you do believe it's beneficial to your learning, and the serving of the city and the citizens, then go ahead and go, as long as you're, you're, you're staying within your allotment to do it. That's my opinion. I don't think it, I really think it needs the, uh, the approval of the council to do it, as long as it's staying within their allotment, when they do what they need to do.
All right, Mr. Mrs. Nash King. Ladies.
Mr. America, um, for each year, we're gonna just.
For travel? For this, you mean, or for?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Olson, she wants to know if are we gonna allocate this based on the budget every year? As far as the travel and things like that. So you have to.
We're gonna have to. I mean, they're, they're gonna be tight years when almost all travel and training is gonna be eliminated for everyone. And there's gonna be other times when.
Which we've done. A couple of years ago, we, we eliminated all that travel, 'cause it wasn't in the budget. So I think, you know, here, we've, we've always used common sense, and I think that will continue, so. Mr. Menke.
I just had a question. Is there a public release requirement for all expenses that a city council member incurs to the city as far as travel and that type of thing? I know when I was on the school board, we had to, you know, get it all filled out, sign it, and it was part of the public record that, you know, what expenses were you incurred?
We, we document expenses for the council the same way we document them for, uh, employees or anybody else. And they are, um, open records. I mean, it's not that we publish them, but if somebody asks for them, we disclose them.
Because I think we either had to, I can't remember if we had to put it on the website, or, I mean, it was like really out there, and, but I didn't know if that was a requirement.
It's not a requirement.
Okay.
Not yet.
So the question is, we spent a lot of time on this one word, "or." So do we want this "or" or not? Do you think?
No, no.
Mr. Rivera.
When you say "or," you mean either the city council or the mayor?
It says the mayor or the city council.
Uh, you know, in 2009, I was, I was recommended to go to DC, and they sent me a letter. And I, the only thing I had to do was, I went to Mr. Hancock, who was the mayor. He looked at it. Went to the city manager, actually, there was a, and, and there was a reason why I went there. And, and there was, I was being recognized through an organization. And that was when Mr. Connie Green was here. And they said, yeah, this is good for, for you, for the citizen. You representing the citizen, you being recognized. I don't think we need to go through the whole entire base, going to mom and pop, asking for permission. I, I think the mayor should be sufficient.
So we'll leave it. We got mayor "or." That's how it is now.
I said mayor, and that's it.
So we got a motion here?
To allow it to remain the same.
We got a motion. Do we got a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. Question by Mr. Harris.
Um, honestly, like I said, I, I don't think it should be either or, honestly. Like I said, if, if, if a council member, if a coun, if a council member sees it as beneficial, now, I mean, at, at the same time, I would go to, I mean, I probably would go to, uh, Mr. Olson here and say, Mr. Olson, this is something that I found. Do you have any knowledge about this? Because I'm not gonna try to, you know, something like that, I wanna make sure I'm, I'm, I'm being responsible. I don't wanna go to something that's a sham. So I'm gonna go to him and say, hey, have you ever heard of anything like this, or any, and so forth? And if he says, oh, yeah, that's a good one, I'll say, okay. But we gotta use, like you said, common sense and good judgment when we do this kinda stuff. So I don't think either or. I think it's just should be taken out, honestly, and, uh, the council members, uh, like I said, up to their own integrity, uh, do it. And if you find any council members who, instead of going to a, a conference, are going, are going to, uh, Georgia, instead to go to a family barbecue, then.
Well, just a little bit oversight there. You know, that way you got the approval of the city mayor, which is, most of the time, that is. But what they're saying is, you know, okay, the mayor and the city manager both approved it, and that's it. So that's all. Comes down to money.
I just, I didn't.
But we got a motion and a second, so. To keep that, the way it is with the word "or." So it's gonna say, mayor or the city council. So we wanna keep it. That's the motion. So all those in favor, just raise your right hand. All those opposed? Wow, motion carries. Six to one. All right, moving on. Page 13. 13, and I don't see any purples, no highlights. Mr. Johnson.
I have a question on page two, section two dash 10.
Two, backwards.
Page 12.
12.
Page 12, section two dash 10, about the room making procedures. Is there a way we can make that uniform, and since in the second sentence, it's part A, the mayor, or any two members of the city council may request a legislative for room making initiative? Since council already decided that it only takes one council member to put something on the agenda, if we can make that uniform, it just takes the mayor or one council member.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Are you gonna make a motion?
Motion. Gregor.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, well, Mayor Council, I move to amend section two dash one zero, part A, second si, uh, sentence, that strikes, uh, two members. And it says, the mayor or one city council member.
Second.
Motion and second by Mr. Kilpatrick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. So you got that change. We're moving on to the page 13. No, nothing there. I didn't see nothing on 13.
I have a question on 13.
13, go back 13.
Page 13, section two za, two dash four zero, process fulfilling uninspired city council terms. Uh, it states in part B, that e, either the full city council or a city council committee. I think we need to clarify, just say the full city council. As a member of this body, I wanna be involved in that decision-making process, not a committee.
Which item again is that?
Section two dash four zero.
Thank you, Seans. It's covered by charter, section 26, to file by city council appointment by the following process will be used. That's on the charter, isn't that?
No. Um, the charter says that you need to fill the vacancy, and then this section says how you do it. And what we did was just write it based upon how you've done it in the past. And in the past, sometimes there's been a committee, and sometimes it's been full council. So Mr. Johnson's specific question is under B, where it says, either the full council or a city council committee will conduct the interviews with the selected applicants.
Yeah. And so you're, you're, what's your recommendation?
Full city council.
The, the full city council?
Full city council.
Not a committee?
Not a committee.
Okay, so full city council. Are about okay with that? So make a motion.
Mayor Council, I move to, uh, Mayor Council, I move to strike. Strike out city council committee from section two dash four zero, item B.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right. Page 14. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two dash 60, is that new in our protocol?
Yes.
Then, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that two dash 60 be approved as presented.
Everybody had a chance to read that? Motion by Mr. Kilpatrick, second by Mrs. Nash King, to approve two dash 60 as written. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Kilpatrick, you make that a motion, dear?
Yeah, it's motion and second. So all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next is two dash 70. City sponsor of nonprofit events and finding public purposes for such sponsorship. And the committee member stated that the city should not sponsor, but, but what? Takes from the org.
Oh, that should be buy, yes.
Buy.
Buy.
Buy tables.
Buy tables. So should, they should not buy tables? Is that what it's saying? Right now, it reads, one council finds it's.
Right. And this is the most recent list that we could come up with, that we have sponsored. And that's why these specific. and that's why these specific things are on here. And we can always add to or take from whichever council decides.
So everybody had a chance to look at that list? And those are things that we go, because those are a lot of great organizations within the community, but sometimes, a lot of them, we don't end up going either way, so...
That's what I was going to say, Mr. Mayor. I got no more comments.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're there, but if you don't go, I think maybe there should be something where, to buy a table, I think we have that. Don't you have to have so many council members to go get a table? If you don't, then you don't buy a table. Mrs. Nash King.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, in terms of, we should be predicated on our budget. If we're cutting everywhere, we should also take into consideration that if we really want to go to these events, we can pay our own way, or if it's not, if we didn't have others to go, on three or four people to the meeting, I think, I don't think that's right, as a council member. Second of all, we have a limited list of individual organizations that we want to go to. I don't think those back, Charles, who stated, or Mr. O'Prey, it shows favoritism. So I don't think that we should even be, if we want to go, Mayor, I understand you want, because you represent the city, but as an individual council member, we either pay our own way, or it's predicated if we have money in the budget to attend these events. That's my recommendation.
So I think we need to clarify it easier, yes or no?
No.
So no.
Mayor, I'm sorry, it does state in the opening paragraph, it says, "Subject to availability of budgeted funds, both in the city's budget and in each council member's individual travel and training budget."
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
What I'm looking for is, if I'm committed, and I say to the city secretary, "I'm going to be in this event, and if I don't make it, I'll pay that ticket back to the city." I'll pay the ticket back to the city. There's a lot of no-shows, there's a lot of yes, and there's a lot of no-shows. I should pay that ticket back for a no-show.
Mr. Harris.
Let's see. I just responded that first, I said, I was blinking. But I'll just say first, that in regards to that, like I said, if somebody knows they're not going to be able to make what it says, yes, just in case they are able to make it, and of course, you know, that may be the situation, but if an emergency comes up, that's unpredictable. Like myself, like, I was able to make it to the event last night, but if the situation I'm in, I may have to take off, and, I mean, but my thought will be, I'm going to it, as far as, now I'm going to it, but if something happens to come up, or an emergency of some sort, and I have to go, then on that part right there, if it's an emergency, I don't think anybody should have to be held accountable, because it was in their full intent to go, but emergency came up. And from that point, um, I'm reading the comment here, and it said, "One committee member stated that the city should not sponsor or buy tables from the organization." And I almost want to say, if I remember that correctly, I can't remember who did it, though, but I almost want to say, in other words, if you, if we sponsored an organization through CDBG funding, I think they're saying that, okay, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking like, maybe we should already have a table anyway, since we gave them all that money anyway through CDBG funding, maybe we just get a, we get a table as a sponsor, because we actually gave you that money already. We gave you thousands of dollars. I'm going to let him explain it, though, because...
What I was, what I made that recommendation was, Miss Nessley, you know, if we give so much money to an organization, and then they turn around, and they try to sell you advertising, and they try to sell you a table, and you give them $5,000, I don't think we should be buying a table. I don't think we should be buying anything at all. They should be giving us something, so, because we promote them. I mean, I give you an organization, you give $10,000, and then they come back and say, "I need more, $600 more, because I want you to buy a table." I think that's wrong.
It is wrong.
What's the recommendation? Don't buy no tables no more?
No, 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 no. We talking about CDBG money, people who we, the city gives money to them. I don't want to mention no specific organization, but XYZ requests the city to get $10,000, but we can't give you $10,000, we give you seven. A check for $7,000 going somewhere, right?
So if you put in there, the city can't buy anything, then they'll probably, and they want you to go there, they're going to have to give it to you.
Well, they should give us a table.
So what is the recommendation?
I'm going to make, and I'm, I say...
What's the motion?
The motion is, if CDBG gives money to an organization, we should not buy a table.
How do you put that in writing?
Give us a table free.
I can figure it out if it passes.
But you're talking about CDBG only, because I mean, there's other events.
Yeah, and I'll give you for an example, I'm going to go straight, I'm going to throw the book out. I'm the president, CEO, Hispanic American Chairman of Commerce. I don't get a cent, and I will never get a cent from the city. That's tax money, or motel, hotel taxes. Well, if I come to the city and say, "Can you buy a table?", if there's no funding there, they should say, "No." If there's funding there, it's up to them. And let me explain to you why. The city, and by the way, I don't do that, I give you a table if I had to give you a table, okay? But the idea behind this is, when the city is giving money to an organization, that organization already receiving a check from us, and they come back around and turn around, they want to sell us a table.
Take more money from us.
Can I ask a question? So how long, is it just in that fiscal year? If you receive city funding in a fiscal year, then we won't buy a table in the fiscal year, or...
No, if you give money from the CDBG, we just gave money to XYZ, and I don't want to pick a specific organization, but if we give money to that organization, and they have a banquet coming up, they'll come back to the city and say, "I want to buy a ta, I want you, the city, buy me a table." And we just gave you $10,000, and you come up here and say you want a table?
So we need to clarify this, there's either, I think the easiest way, either yes or no on all of them, either yes or no?
If we did...
Because you don't want to just say this, you just want to say either...
I don't want to make that motion.
Because you got a list here, all these...
I pay for my own ticket, I just say, if the city buy a table, and you commit it, and you don't go, no emergency or emergency, because you need to pay for that ticket.
All right, Mr. Menke.
I just think, given the, you know, budget briefing that we got earlier today, I think we're hard pressed to say that, you know, although they're good causes, I just don't think we can be that discriminating in those, even though it's a small amount of money, I think it's, it's an impression...
Because each table, you're looking at about $400 to $500, and that's a couple of thousands.
So I move that those organizations, or the language referring to the purchasing of tables with city tax money would be stricken from our protocol.
So motion and second to not buy table. If the council wants to go, we can still get the invite, but then you just have to pay for it. And if we get enough of council members that go, then we can buy a table on our own, you know, it's like, usually it's only 20 bucks or whatever it is.
Could I request to amend the motion?
Go ahead.
I just want to amend the motion that I think the mayor's, the head of the city, should be permitted to go as an individual, not buy a table, but I think the city...
I'm okay too paying with it. The mayor's okay too. I can pay for it. Usually I end up paying two tables and only use one, so, because I get the city, I always go with the city, and my business buys one, and it's... Mr. Harris.
I'll just say, even as, you know, I understand, you know, as far as the budget and so forth, and I understand the argument that says, you know, city council members should have to pay for their own way, I still, like I said, if we have that budget set, and that budget is approved, then I still think that we should all be able to attend a budget within that approved budget, okay? Because like you say, we get $100 a month, okay? And the stuff we do, the gas, and everything else we do, as far as the time that we do as city council members, because I know I go see a lot of citizens, I'm driving around all over places and doing that kind of stuff, but when it comes down to the banquets, I agree with Councilman Rivera, wholeheartedly, that if organizations receive CDBG type money from us, then that should be a complimentary table, at that particular banquet. Now, of course, if the budget, if the budget gets strained at some point in time, or if the budget runs out, then I still think the council members should still be able to go within that budget, and not just one person, because we all represent, even though you're the face of the city, we all, we still all represent the citizens as well. We're all, if I want to say, like I said, you're the face, we're the arms and the legs and everything like that, if you want to put it that way, so I still think we all should be able to go, and if council members don't want to go, and, or if they want to spend their own money, then they can do that on their own. And that'd be their choice, that they can do that on their own, but in the meantime, as long as it is budgeted, and it's being handled responsibly, then I think all members should be able to go if they decide to.
All right.
It's always a freedom to say no.
Let's try it, we're going to try and see what you guys think, because we got a motion and a second, so...
Discussion.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
I'm certainly not going to be hypocritical. I made that motion in 2016 to take everything out of our budget, to balance that budget, and we did. And it didn't hurt this council anymore, in the eyes of these organizations, nor of the citizens. We gained credibility for the citizens by us not, if we're asking the citizens to take a... I'm trying to say it tactfully. If we're asking them to take a bite out of their, without us trying to raise taxes on them and everything, by everything, then we should also set the example here. I even said we should take out of the budget the food, and that got, oh, couldn't do that, but anyway, but these are, examples have shown, in the past, we've had tables for eight, and four people show up.
All right.
So, no, that's my point about is...
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor of taking out where the city doesn't pay for any of those events there, tables or anything, raise your right hand.
Is that CDBG, or just all in general?
Everything. Everything.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that, Mr. Mayor.
Four, all those opposed, three, so motion carries four to three.
Because I mean, when you look at, when you look at who makes what, and who gets what as far as money and so forth, I'm sure he gets more than I do, I'm sure she gets more than I do, I'm sure.
I'm going to look at this, we're looking at this, we only got a few more, do we want to stick it out? Or we want to, so let's stick it out.
Mayor, before we go, can I just make sure I understood what we just did? So that one is, no city funds will be used to purchase tables or individual seats?
Yeah.
Okay.
The motion was only for the mayor to have that...
Oh, no, it didn't include the mayor, I said nobody.
Yeah, he did amendment, he amended it.
For the mayor?
Only for the mayor, he's the one...
No, he said, he was going to, I said, "He don't have to," and he said, "All right."
Yeah, he didn't have to, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he said, "No."
Mayor exempted himself.
I'll do it just like you guys.
Tell the baby do it, but people can't afford tickets.
All right, so we're going to save $2,000.
All right, so now, moving down to page, what is it? Page 15, Policy on Waving Leans and Demolition of Dangerous Buildings and Health saving. Policy is included...
I'll post about this one.
This is a policy that y'all adopted about a year ago, and it's already been included in the finance policy, so it doesn't need to also be included here.
So we're deleting all of that.
Yes.
So moving on, 17, nothing, 18, nothing, uh-oh. Mr. Olson.
You guys have been doing a fantastic job. Just the fact that you got past the preface is a great step forward. But it's pushing 9:30, and I'm, I think we ought to come back and finish this.